Very good. I'd like to call Building and Grounds to order. Will Clerk please read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the agenda. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We have an agenda.
Mr. Chairman, we have a motion to discuss regulation of roadside memorials.
Excellent.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. So let's, those in favor of that item?
Aye.
Aye? Discussion is open.
Well, as I read it, roadside memorial has gone through some of us on the committee, or not all of us on the committee, as well as gone through City Attorney Dave Zellifer.
Correct.
And from that, we have the two paragraphs that we'd like to have a full counsel look at.
Yes, there's two paragraphs we'd like to have the full counsel look at. So, did you want to?
Did you want to go ahead and read that?
No, go ahead.
Okay. Well, the first thing is the definition of roadside memorial for purposes of this chapter, which is a 7-1-7, will be the placement of materials along a public sidewalk, roadway, or right-of-way owned by the city as a tribute to a person or event. A violation of this section will be deemed as a municipal infraction and a citation may be issued to the person or persons who placed a roadside memorial. And then the actual regulation would be the placement of a roadside memorial is not allowed along the public sidewalk, roadway, or right-of-way owned by the city or maintained by the city. Upon the discovery of a roadside memorial, the city, through the police department or code enforcement, can remove the roadside memorial and store for up to sixty, a period of sixty days. If the roadside memorial's not been claimed after such sixty-day period, the city may dispose of said roadside memorial materials. And I might add that I left out in that first paragraph a definition after "owned by the city" or "maintained by the city" as well.
Okay.
So, I think when we had this conversation in the past, I think Councilman Lind had some thoughts from a DOT perspective on the right-of-way. And I guess what I'm wondering here is, for example, along Highway 63 or something, is that our land, and so that's our authority to be able to remove from there, or is that the DOT? I guess that's one question I would have.
That's why we added that parentheses.
But do we maintain that?
Yes.
In the city, in the city limits, the city assumes responsibility for enforcement in the right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
On state highways.
It would be our responsibility to maintain that.
Correct.
So, can I ask a question?
And that's the same way with 218 and 380, and those roads also, correct?
Yes.
U.S. highways?
Yes.
Okay.
So garbage removal and everything like that as well?
Yeah.
Within the city limits?
I think, yeah.
I'm pretty sure.
You had a question?
Yes, you had a question?
So, we're not allowing any roadside memorials, except for what we're saying?
Right, just like no political signs, and really, you're not supposed to put anything in the public right-of-way. So, this is just defining or adding to roadside memorials, which have never officially been allowed anyway. So, we're just clarifying that, please don't put anything in the roadway. And so, if something goes in the roadway, you know, it's not going to be...
Right-of-way.
Or right-of-way, sorry. I'm assuming it's not going to be, unless it's blocking something, not going to be something they have to get out and chase right-of-way. It's not going to be the highest priority item, but it's something that definitely we want to clean up and take care of. And if we can contact the people that put it there to remove it, great. If it's not removed, we can remove it, somebody from the city can remove it and hold it for sixty days until it's claimed. If not claimed, it'll be disposed of properly.
I like it.
You're saying Mr. Zellifer was supportive of this and the writing of it and stuff, correct?
Yes, he was provided notes, and he took that and made it very consistent with the existing ordinance regarding items in the city-owned right-of-way.
Tom, do you happen to know how this compares to the DOT?
They have about the same policy, they just can't have them. But, that being said...
It's the enforcement piece.
You see them way up on the fence line in some highways. I think they just look the other way. But the regulations...
As we've been doing for the last few years.
Yeah, the regulations say you can't be there.
Well, so did the existing regulations that we have, saying you can't put anything in the public right-of-way. This is just clarifying that that includes roadside memorials.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think, I think the ordinance we've got is somewhat clear, but for whatever reason, we don't necessarily enforce it.
It does not call out roadside memorials. We've had a lot of complaints about not enforcing it. So, we're trying to clarify. We're trying to pass this and allow people ample time to remove what's already out there. And then, what isn't claimed, the city will clean up and hold for a period of sixty days.
I think one of the issues also was that it didn't specify who would be the enforcer. And here it specifies it's the police department and/or code enforcement is responsible for removing that, those memorials. The only thing that was, to me, a drawback in this was that I was hoping there would be an allowance or a space for people being able to put in a marker, if they wanted to, of their own choosing, their own cost, at ground level. And we didn't manage to put that in here. And, you know, I know that that's pretty hard to do in concrete, if you're talking about concreted areas, but other areas, I wish that that would have been included in here, but it's been left out. And prior to today, I did have contact, or attempted to have contact with all the people that I met with before, and told them we were having this meeting today, or left a message to that effect. And I don't believe anybody is here, although they are aware, we'll go to full counsel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
So, one item. To Mr. Morrissey's point about not having in here, about placing at ground-level monuments or anything, the thought was that we already have the ability, not at, within the public right-of-way, but certainly within parks and other areas. Paul could probably talk to that of benches within parks and planting of trees, and there's all kinds of opportunities to place memorial in appropriate places.
Yeah, I understand.
Including a cemetery.
I understand that.
Mr. Welper?
I'm reading the last sentence of the second paragraph. It says, "A violation of this section will be deemed as a municipal infraction and a citation may be issued to a person or persons who placed the roadside memorial." So, you're saying that you shouldn't even place it in the first place, or you're going to be cited?
Yeah, that is true.
So...
That is consistent with placing anything in the public right-of-way.
It's a maybe, also.
Of course, there's discretion.
See, it says "may."
Yeah, discretion involved.
But you're talking about picking it up and holding it for sixty days. Well, they shouldn't place it there in the first place.
That's true. But we're, you know, I think we're being realistic, and we're trying to be sensitive of, you know, the roadside memorials that have been placed. So, I think it's accommodating, yet takes care of the problem. Any additional discussion?
None further from me.
Okay.
When are you going to bring that to council, Dave?
Soon as we can.
Next week.
Next week? Bring that up next week?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion, second to adjourn. Those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Meeting to order. Madam Secretary, if you agree to the roll, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
So, we have a, let's see, motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We have a motion, or we have an agenda, Dave, if you'd like to take that.
And we have a motion to receive and file Mayor Clark's recommendation for the following appointee, John Merzlack, for board and commission for Memorial Hall Commission, with an expiration date of 4/13/2018.
I will second that motion. Any questions, comments, concerns?
None from me, thank you.
Seeing none, all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. Merzlack is appointed.
Excellent.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. We have a motion, second to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, David.
The Finance Committee meeting to order, please. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed, and also the amendments of April 6th.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We have some new business, two items.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take those. First, we have Mark Bosin, Manager of Rehabilitation Services and John Martin Rehabilitation Relocation Specialist for the class meeting, eight-hour lead abatement refresher training in Waterloo, Iowa, June 2nd, at a cost not to exceed $350. And then, we also have Jason Hernandez, Medical Officer to go to Iowa Critical Care Paramedic Course in Waterloo, Iowa, April 13th through the 20th, at a cost not to exceed $645. I make a motion, we approve those two items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I would just have a question on both those, as far as certification, that type of thing. So, I don't know if we've got somebody here for, that could speak for Mark.
It's on the department requests.
Yeah, right.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the train for Jason Hernandez, Dantrellka Director of Safety Services. It is a certification course. It's a higher level of certification. Chief Trueller is requiring all three medical officers to attend this, and they're able to provide a higher level of critical care to the patients.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, we don't have anybody on the other one, correct?
But...
That would be rude.
It is grant reimbursable, and it is required certification according to the attached documentation.
Thank you.
And I think that would be accurate, that they require the contractors to have that, and I think the people that monitor the contractors have to have it as well.
Got you. Thanks.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. We have pre-odds. David?
Yes, thank you. Building maintenance, $9,563.25 for caulking of concrete sidewalk and expansion joints outside Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center. This is a continuation of last year. Leisure services, $3,250 for annual software service maintenance agreement with Maximum Solutions. Leisure services, $1,261.45 for plumbing fixtures for new tennis center building. Leisure services, $2,797 plus $250 shipping for replacement decking for skate park. Leisure services, not to exceed $2,000 for additional jerseys and caps for youth baseball and softball programs. Police, amount estimated at $1,800 for renewal of internet evidence finder software license and purchase of mobile artifacts module and software maintenance support for it. Police, estimated at $4,028 for removal of windows and overhead door of property building and replace block repair wall, or replace with block repair wall to the rear of building that has cracks in the mortar. Traffic operations, $1,187.73 to replace copper water service from pavement box thirty feet on Mitchell Avenue. Waterloo Fire Rescue, $1,620 for biannual cardio pulmonary examinations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I had a quick question. Dan, on the $4,028 for the repair of the, or removal of window and overhead door, the property building, is that the building across the street? Is that the building on 6th and Franklin?
Dan, Dantrellka Director of Safety Services. Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I would vote aye on everything except that item. I just questioned, and I would vote no on that.
Okay. Those items pass. I move that we approve budget line item amendments. Copies are on file in Ms. Scher's office. And also, that we pay the bills this week, which are
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Madam Chairman, I have a question on the budget line items.
Speak.
Michelle, on the number four, the salaries and IFRS and legal services and FICA, is that offset in another budget? In other words, we're paying some salary someplace. Does that budget get reduced by fifty, sixty thousand dollars, whatever it is?
I'm not sure which one you're referring to.
Item four, the section 108 loan program.
That doesn't have any salaries in it.
Oh, I'm, not four, not four.
Okay. That's why I was confused.
Five, I'm sorry. I apologize. Five.
Yes.
See what I'm asking?
Yes, I do know what you're asking. And yes, that is being done by our Community Development Block Grant Department. So, the salaries that they apply to this project will reduce the salaries in the other, the main block grant activity, 5850. So, they will, whatever salaries are actually used to monitor this project, will be charged to this project, and they'll have more budget available in the regular CDBG money.
Okay.
Anything else?
Does that mean, did I answer your question?
Yes, one more question. On six, then, what are we going to do with that extra two and a half million dollars?
That's just amounts that people are spending on projects this year, that the bonds were sold in prior years.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember which ones. I looked at that last week. Off the top of my head, I can't remember which ones are spending more this year. It's stuff that didn't, things didn't move as quickly in prior years as they expected, but we got them done, or are getting them done in fiscal 15, probably because the weather's been drier, a little more cooperative, so.
And Michelle, I've got a couple of questions, too, if I could ask you. Going back to item number four, so do I understand that's money that we had, that we did not use? Is that basically what that is?
That's correct. We had the section 108 loan, and we were, part of that program was to make loans to businesses. And we had one that got very far down the road, but then they didn't close. So, we had this loan reserve, we approved for loan reserve, to, that would be used if they were in default. And since they never took out the loan, we, we just didn't need it. So, we have returned it to HUD now.
Okay. And then also, and I don't know if this is a question for you, or maybe again for Dan, but item number seven...
Dan, that's about Tri-County forfeitures.
Yeah, could you maybe explain that a little bit? I'm just thinking, at one time, I thought, thinking back a year or so ago to the Neighborhood Patrol, that we didn't have any money left for fuel for that vehicle, where we had volunteers driving it. But now, I see we've got $10,000. Is that two different things, or is that the same thing?
It is two different things. The reason why we couldn't use the money for, the Dantrellka Director of Safety Services, the reason the rules did not allow us to use the money for that Neighborhood Patrol for a second year is it's a reoccurring expense. Now, Iowa's rules in regard to utilizing forfeiture funds are pretty loose, but at the federal level, based on how we acquired those funds, there are more rigid rules and variant rules. And we tend to use those federal rules, so we don't get ourselves in the media. You'll notice that the Waterloo Police Department wasn't mentioned in a recent Des Moines Register article about improper use of these forfeiture funds. That's because we have very strict and specific criteria that we follow in use of them.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Those items pass. I move we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Gentlemen, welcome to this regularly scheduled Monday, April 13th, meeting of the Waterloo City Council. Welcome to all of you that are in the audience, and all of those that might be watching on our public access television. Also, Madam Clerk, would you please start us by reading the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mr. Welper?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Thank you very much. If you would all please join me in standing for just a moment of silent reflection and prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. David Jones, our Ward One council member. Mr. Jones, please.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hart?
I can make a motion to approve an amended agenda, and that amendment is on our consent agenda, and it is 1.8, 8.4, and a 1.8.5, and it's resetting the date of the public hearing as April 20th, 2015, to enter to a development agreement with Three Little Lambs LLC, and authorize said sale and conveyance of land located northwest of 1907 Blackhawk Street for a dollar. And 1.8.5 is resetting the date of public hearing as April 20th as well, to approve the request by the City of Waterloo to vacate a portion of the existing twenty-foot-wide alley located adjacent to lots 1, 2, and 9, and 10, within block 16 of Hayes Addition. Also, with the approval of the amended agenda, I move that we approve the minutes of April 6th regular session.
Second.
Very good. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. We have some proclamations tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, and Laura Bruce, are you here, Laura?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and Stacy, why don't you guys come up, and we're going to read our first one tonight. Guys, just through the, through the door, and come on up. Just come in right here. Come on over here. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Hi, guys. This first proclamation tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is to recognize Crime Victims' Rights Week. This is a City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas three million persons in America experienced at least one violent victimization in 2013, and eleven and a half million households experienced one or more property victimizations. And whereas less than half of violent crimes were reported to police in 2013, and less than one out of ten violent crime victims received assistance from a victim service agency. And whereas victims and survivors of crime across America need and deserve consistent access to support and assistance that can help them cope with the short and long-term consequences of crime. And whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 19th through the 25th, 2015, is an important time to join together to engage communities and empower victims in our nation's efforts to promote individual and public safety and justice. And whereas engaging communities requires recognition of the devastating impact that crime has on individuals, on families, neighborhoods, schools, and the economy of our nation, which calls for a collective response from everyone in America to address crime prevention, justice, and victim assistance. And whereas empowering victims requires a collective understanding of the devastating emotional, physical, financial, spiritual, and social impact of crime victims on victims and survivors, and national commitment to provide support and services to victims that respect their autonomy and privacy, and promote their personal safety. And whereas victims and survivors of crime can gain strength from the wide range of supportive services offered by over 10,000 community and justice system-based programs, and the more than 32,000 federal and state statutes that define and protect their rights. Now, therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 19th through the 25th as Crime Victims Rights Week, and join together to recognize the significant accomplishments of our nation's victim assistance field, and to recommit our collective energies to engage communities and empower crime victims and survivors. Who's going to get the proclamation? Okay, and who wants to say something?
I will.
Stacy, very good. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor Clark.
You're welcome.
And the Waterloo City Council for your ongoing support. In recognition of National Crime Victim Rights Week, the Waterloo Police Department, along with the Allen Hospital Child Protection Center, is hosting a Cedar Valley Family Safety Expo at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex one week from today, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., open to the public. And we have more than 20 organizations throughout the Cedar Valley here to show families how to be safe, prevent crime, and show victims that we do support them and their rights in the Cedar Valley. Our, our goal is twofold. We, one, want to engage the community, so the Cedar Valley can make this a safe place for us to raise our families. And, two, we want to let the victims know what services are available to them, and let them know that we do support them.
And whereas acquisition of financial literacy skills by Iowans will improve the quality of their lives, will provide them with skills for success, excuse me, will contribute to positive changes for the communities in which they live and work, and will benefit the economy of this state. And whereas this endeavor is worthy of support and cooperation for the benefit of the citizens and consumers of the state to protect their financial future. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of the City of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 18th through the 25th as Money Smart Week Cedar Valley in the City of Waterloo, and hereby urge all citizens to participate enthusiastically in this observance. Julie, why don't you tell us about Money Smart Week?
There are several events and classes that are going to be held during this week. There will be an insert in the newspaper on Thursday, this Thursday, prior to the week, which will list all of the various events and classes, et cetera, that are taking place. Some at UNI, some at the YMCA, there's various things. Our agency, the Housing Authority, we are doing a set of three Money Smart classes at the Center for the Arts. The first one is the Tuesday of this week, and that is basic financial education. We have sent a mailing to all of our participants in our program, and it is open to the general public as well, and that's based on the curriculum that was developed by the FDIC. So, there are several events, and I encourage everyone to go out there and get involved in it.
Thanks, Julie. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And lastly, but certainly not least, Rita Grimm. Rita, are you here? Come on up.
Hi. Good to see you.
And we are here with Rita to celebrate Equal Pay Day. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas since the passage of the Equal Pay Act in 1963, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act in 1964, women, especially minority women, continue to suffer the consequences of inequitable pay. And whereas in 2009, the Lilly Ledbetter Fair Pay Act was signed into law, which amends Title VII of the Civil Rights Act, and now we must pass the Paycheck Fairness Act, which amends the Equal Pay Act by closing loopholes and improving the law's effectiveness. And whereas the U.S. Census Bureau shows year-round, full-time working women in 2013 earned only 77% of the earnings of year-round, full-time working men. And whereas wage disparity persists across all educational levels, as women with a college degree or higher lose $713,000 over a 40-year period versus a $270,000 loss for women who did not finish high school. And whereas over a working lifetime, this wage disparity costs the average American woman and her family an estimated $700,000 to $2 million in lost wages impacting Social Security benefits and pensions. And whereas fair pay equity policies can be implemented simply and without undue costs or hardship in both the public and private sectors. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas Tuesday, April 14th, symbolizes the time in which the wages paid to American women catch up to the wages paid to men from the previous year. Now therefore, I Buck Clark, Mayor of Waterloo, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, April 20, excuse me, April 14th, as Equal Pay Day in Waterloo, Iowa, to recognize the full value of women's skills and significant contributions to the labor force, and to further encourage businesses to conduct an annual, excuse me, conduct an internal pay evaluation to ensure women are being paid fairly. That's for you, and that's for you, and I will give you the microphone, and let you say a couple of things.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Rita. You bet.
And thank you, Mayor Clark, and also to the council members for presenting this proclamation. I think it's really sad that we have been for years not even moving from 77 cents on a dollar.
Thank you.
You know, and then that implements many things. You know, like they said, the Social Security, anything, and the benefits. So also, if you are a business owner, men, women, please look at your pay scale and pay levels, so that women get the same pay as men in the same job. We are also doing, we have an anniversary of 95 years of the Waterloo business and professional women. We will celebrate May 2nd at the Snowden House, and it'll start at 11 o'clock, and we want to celebrate the accomplishments of the women.
Good. Good for you.
All right.
Thanks, Rita. Thank you very much. It's an important topic, and why we're addressing it. Thank you very much. And to Rita and the other folks that were here for the proclamations, you're more than welcome to stay and enjoy the whole council meeting. You're not going to offend anybody if you choose not to, so I'll just give you the opportunity to do what you'd like to do. You bet. All right, moving ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A move that we receive, place on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B5. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, a move that we make our bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Chair.
The bills this week are $1,220,053.46, 1,220,005.46.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, please, roll call vote.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
You get the motion carries. I want to, who do I want to recognize here? John Merzlech. Many of you know John, I'm sure, around the city, but John has been appointed to our Memorial Hall Commission, and will do just a fabulous job there. I don't see John here tonight, but John, if you're watching, thank you for stepping up and volunteering for one of our really important, Memorial Hall is kind of a hidden gem in our city, so thank you for stepping up and helping us out with that. All right, moving on. Number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number two, approve order assessing civil penalty for $300 to save more foods for sale of tobacco to minor violation of first offense, and that has been canceled due to a settlement.
Second.
Very good. Is there comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
A move to receive and file proof of publication, notice of public hearing for ordinance approving a request by GMJ 2 Industries to vacate a portion of East Shawless Road right away approximately 300 feet to the east of Texas Street. Second.
Questions or comments? I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file to item number three?
None.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against the request from item number three? Second time.
Mr. Mayor, a move to close the hearing and also to add the recommendation of approval for the Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission. Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, a move to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance approving a request by GMJ 2 Industries to vacate a portion of East Shawless Road right away approximately 300 feet to the east of Texas Street. Second.
Madam Clerk, please roll call vote.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. And I might add at this time, before we move on with this, Mr. Kiefer, as most of you know, all of you know, probably this is the Kiefer Housing Edition, and Rick would very much like to be here tonight to speak in favor of that, if there were any questions. But Rick had open-heart surgery today, and Julie called today and wanted me to pass along, but he's doing fine. He had four bypasses, had all kinds of blockage, but he's in great shape, and he's in recovery, and wants to wish everybody well, so we should keep Rick and Julie in our prayers as we move forward with this. Very good. Next one, please.
Mr. Mayor, a move to suspend the rules. Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
You get the motion carries. Thank you, Council.
Mr. Mayor, a move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt ordinance. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good. And I might add at this time, before we move on with this, Mr. Kiefer, as most of you know, all of you know, probably this is the Kiefer Housing Edition, and Rick would very much like to be here tonight to speak in favor of that, if there were any questions. But Rick had open-heart surgery today, and Julie called today and wanted me to pass along, but he's doing fine. He had four bypasses, had all kinds of blockage, but he's in great shape, and he's in recovery, and wants to wish everybody well, so we should keep Rick and Julie in our prayers as we move forward with this. Very good. Next one, please.
Mr. Mayor, a move to suspend the rules. Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
You get the motion carries. Thank you, Council.
Mr. Mayor, a move to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt ordinance. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, it's a roll call.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilford?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Let's do all four of those resolutions at once, please. Mr. Schmidt?
Item four is adopting a resolution authorizing the assignment of rebates documents for 815 Tower Park Drive, and that apparently is document number 8813-09-102-007 due to the sale of the property. Item number five is adopting a resolution approving the request of GMJ 2 Industries for the 11-lot final plat of Kiefer Estates First Edition located along the north side of East Shawless Road, just east of Texas Street, for the purpose of creating a new residential subdivision. Item number six is adopting a resolution approving supplemental agreement number two with JDE Engineering of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $5,510 in conjunction with additional construction review services for the fiscal year 2011 Downtown Wayfinding Signage Contract Number 783, and authorize mayor to execute said document. And item number seven is adopting a resolution approving a development agreement between Endeavors Limited LLC and the City of Waterloo for the construction of a 30,000-square-foot industrial building, adding $900,000 of taxable value, and city acquisition of property located at 321 West 6th and 817 Bluff Street in downtown Waterloo for $470,000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Schmidt, questions or comments, Council?
Mr. Mayor, could we just have a, just a real brief overview on item number six, given our questions recently about increases and that type of thing?
Eric.
Eric Clarks, City Engineer. If you remember, this is a project that we got DOT funding for, but was not the type of project that they typically do, so there was a lot of extra work involved in getting suppliers and contractors and things certified to meet the DOT standards, and it just took a lot of extra work to do that, and then there were some closeout issues too, so it was taking more consultant time than we anticipated because of those conditions. Thank you.
Should there be ongoing costs related to this, though, Eric, or should we just, aren't we just about done with this, don't you think?
We're real close to getting this wrapped up, and this will finish that up as far as a consultant is concerned.
Okay, very good, thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
On number seven, hey, no. Are we, are they under threat of eminent domain? That's what it says in the web, somebody told me that's what it says in our website.
No, Anderson Community Planning and Development Director. We have been working most cooperatively with Johnstone Supply to help them expand and relocate in the Waterloo community. Their current site does not allow them to expand there. What they're probably looking at, our standard acquisition contracts will note that the city has the power of condemnation, so it's pretty standard wording that we have in there, saying that this can be made under the threat of condemnation. We've been working, we have not had to threaten anyone in any way for this. This has been very cooperative on both, both parts.
And if we do it under that threat, don't we have to offer relocation assistance and advisory services?
We are using local funds, so we do not have to use federal process.
What, when they moved to a new place, what are the rebates? Do they get tax rebates?
They're not moving into a TIP district, they're moving into the university corridor that isn't the CURA, so they would be eligible for the three-year or the 10-year CURA schedule, but that's an abatement process, not a rebate. But they're not moving into a TIP district.
What, explain real quick, three-year at what percent?
The CURA is an urban revitalization area, whereas a TIP district's under urban renewal law, so it's a little bit different. The CURA is strictly an abatement, so that they don't pay taxes and get them back from the city, they're just not taxed at that amount from the county upon their new construction.
What's the rate?
They can choose either three years at 100%.
Okay.
Or they can choose 10 years at a graduated scale, it goes 80, 70, 60, 50, 40, 40, 30, 30, 20, 20.
But after that, then they're in a, they would support the general fund, is what I'm trying to ask.
Correct. That is correct.
Further questions? Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk on 4, 5, 6, and 7.
You have someone.
Yes, sir?
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. I have great confusion on the number seven. Are they, how can we be forcing them to move, or what's the condemnation? Looks to me like they're wanting to move.
Yeah, John, we're not forcing them to move at all.
Then why are we paying for it?
The condemnation...
It's like you, like me buying a house, I want to improve my house. I'm landlocked because I can't build onto my lot. I'm as big as I can be, so you guys will come by and buy my house, tear it down, build me a bigger one, and that's what we're doing. We're starting quite a little deal down here, because there's a gentleman down here that some of them got 70 buildings. What happens if they decide to start moving stuff around? We've spent a lot of money in the last couple of years, and we can't keep paying taxes. Sorry, thanks.
Thanks, John.
David Dreyer, 3145 West 4th Street. I guess I have to echo the comments of the last person. We are doing the Legion Building, and every time that we turn around, next week in the paper is another $2,000, $3,000, $500,000 we're going to spend, and we just got our taxes raised, our property evaluations went up. It seems like, and probably is truly, always on the back of the taxpayer. When I was in business, if I wanted to improve, I had to do it myself because there was no money available, and that's been a long time ago. Understand, things have changed. But we keep getting these people that come into town and say, "Well, I want to do this, or I want to do that. And if you don't, I'm going to go to Cedar Falls." And we count that. It's on the back of the taxpayers every time. The other thing I read in the paper, and I'm not sure whether this is true or not, but we're going to do this with Johnstone Supply, or another business, or another business, or another business, and we have no destiny for that building. Unless you have a destiny for something, unless you have somebody buying your property, like this gentleman said, so you can move up, you can upgrade whatever, you don't move. So why are we, as the taxpayers, always picking up the pocket for someone else? And I, I have done a lot of business with Johnstones over a lot of years. I like all the people that are there. I'm not against Johnstones moving. I'm against the taxpayers subsidizing it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Very good. Roll call vote on four, five, six and seven, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Wilber?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes, except no one's seven.
Very good, those motions carry. Ladies and gentlemen, it's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. It is time for oral presentations, but I'm going to kind of start with the caveat to oral presentations. I have a video that I want to show tonight to everybody and to everybody that's watching on television. It's kind of a follow-up. We talked about Ed Gallagher last week and warned his passing. His funeral was last week, and there was a video that I mentioned a week ago, that Ed was recognized at the Chamber and Alliance Dinner, three weeks ago now, almost three weeks ago. And he just gave an eloquent, fabulous reception, acceptance speech. I'm going to play that tonight for everybody. So I, I was going to just, I thought about just canceling oral presentations altogether, so that we could end with that video, but I won't. I know there are people here to speak. So if somebody that just has a burning desire to, to speak tonight, that's great, you may. I would ask you to keep it short, and let's, let's try to end with Ed tonight. So if anybody, under those conditions, if you, if you would like to speak, please do.
Bill Camire, 526 Wolf Park Boulevard. You know, I just sat here and witnessed exactly what perks is setting out here. These two gentlemen brought up a good issue. And all of you just sat there and didn't say a thing. Why don't you just discuss what you're doing? If you, if you would have sat there and discussed this after these, it doesn't call for emotion, it doesn't call for any kind of action. All it calls for is dissemination of information. That's all it calls for. You could have just as well sat here and said, "Well, here's the reason why we're doing what we're doing." But you didn't. You just ignore them, like, "Well, so what? They got up and talked, that's enough, sit down." Next thing I want to bring up, animal control. We've had a big issue on animal control. On April 3rd, at 10:30 in the morning, we dispatched three police cars to an address over on the west side, because a dog was loose. I don't think that's a good use of our police department. That's not their job, to chase a loose dog around. That's animal controls. They should be able to handle that. It only should be in an extreme emergency that we call on the police department to chase dogs. We've got enough going on in Waterloo. We don't need our, our police department to do that. Now, having said that, I think it's time that we look at search and seizure in our town. We've got a lot going on, and we need to support our police department. And I know that's, that law, or that resolution, or whatever it might be, is, is very controversial. But guess what? Look what time of year it is, and we're going to see more of it. And we're not safe, any one of us. And as I look around the room up here, it could have been any one of our little four-year-olds that got shot. They crossed the line. We need to do something. The only suggestion that I'd have is put it on your agenda for next week and discuss it. Give our police support some support. The one thing that I would ask for is put a timeframe on it, a six-month timeframe. But let's see what happens. We need to get these guns off the street. It's not responsible gun owners that are doing this. So we need to support our police department, and show them that, the people that are out there that are doing this thing, that we're serious. Enough's enough. We don't care where you live in Waterloo or anything else. Shooting is not acceptable. Shooting at houses is absolutely not acceptable. It could have been my grandchildren, your grandchildren. A bullet has no conscience. It'll get anybody in this path. And if we just happen to be in the wrong place at the wrong time, these fools are all over town now. And we need to do something. And I think we ought to look at that law, and you ought to have your attorney start working on that immediately, and you ought to start looking at putting it in effect, with a timeframe on it, because obviously, there's people out there, and I'm not all in favor of that law, but I think there's a lot of people out there that aren't.
Thanks, Mr. Camire.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, I'll try and make this short. Number one, I think it would behoove us, Councilman Hart, especially working in an academic environment, when we seen those kids that got in this little raft, you know, where they were fighting. It'd be interesting to know the social and economic conditions of each of those children. That could be worked through the university. In fact, I think we ought to be documenting these things economically and socially, not just in what they did. The second thing is, on this Johnstone, I can't believe that thing. I mean, that is, I won't say what it is, but it is really interesting. Another thing I'd like to bring up is, we have this Councilman Morrissey over here. You mentioned at one time you'd like to help people get better jobs, et cetera, et cetera. I have a son that just returned after 10 years in Asia. He'd been all the way, from South Korea to Thailand, to you name it, he was there. And he returned from China permanently, and the ethics are different there than they are here. And China lets us survive only because we can do them an advantage on the money they lent us. Anytime China wants, without conscience, they can jerk that money, and we're done for it, period. So don't look at China. I also have a friend of mine who went back to India. I was telling him about this deal with China, he said, "Jerry, that's the way India is. We have a different mentality than you people have. And what we do, you may think is terrible, for us, it's okay." And remember that. So what are we going to do? I'll tell you, you can do, Mr. Morrissey, and I'll bet you won't do it. You ought to get right up to the State House, and you ought to say, "We got a hold of it, we can't have any wage increases until the private sector catches up with us." It'll never happen. And what's going to happen? If you watch California, we are going to have a condition where you are going to have all kinds of ethnic groups, variety, children, kids. See, they're folks. They're going to get angry. They ain't going to contain them. They're not going to be disciplined. And this is what's happened in Georgia, and all the, Jordan, and all these countries. And finally, they got tired of the top echelon taking control of the private sector. And what you should do is rename the private sector to the, what do you call people who are subservient? The private sector has now become the subservient sector. You have become the owners of the subservient people. They ain't going to fly too long. Now, getting into more positive things, I would like to see, number one, I think Noah's done a good job. I think we should be concentrating on what's going to happen one to two years down here. It's not going to be pretty. I wish I was wrong, and I hope I am wrong. But if we start seeing what you're going to start seeing in California, as you know, that's going to, they're talking desert now. Where are those people going to go? As you look down south, I have five minutes. As you look down south-
You have three minutes, Jerry, and it's up.
They have flooding.
You have three minutes and it's up, Jerry.
No, I asked for five minutes today.
You called in?
Yes, I did. But anyway, so you're going to have the southern people looking for a place to live. You don't have to build all these things. They'll come here whether they want to or not. They won't have a choice. So why penalize the private sector for it? You know? Try, try management. It might work. Have a good day.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jim Chapman, 224 Birch. I knew Ed and Kathy real well. They were good people, real good people. I got some questions. You couldn't answer me last week, Buck, on the price of Sunnyside South, so my neighbors come up with some more questions. Did we have the property appraised, and at what cost? Did someone review the appraisal, and at what cost? And did we have staff members working on this project? There ought to be a paper trail of staff people working on this project, and at what cost? And did we have former city attorney Walsh's firm get any money out of this project? Now, there's four questions that I think could be answered, right there.
Okay, would, would you like to make that an official records request, Jim?
I sure would.
Because it'll take us a while to get it. Would you please put it in writing and send it to me?
I sure will.
And I'll make sure that they get answered.
I sure will.
Thanks.
David Dryer, 3145 West Fourth. I'll make this quick. I forgot to include it a while ago. Seems like every week, every two weeks, whatever, we're getting another buyout or whatever we're going to do. Can we get a projection of what's going to come down the road at the next council meeting, so that we know what's coming down the pike? Because Legion, last week, Johnstones this week, 400, 400. We keep, and it always, again, tallies on to the taxpayer. So if you've got a lot of projects out there, Noel, can you tell us what's coming down the pike? So maybe we can accumulate some more thoughts, rather than coming to a meeting and then have it pass, pass, pass? Thank you.
Generally speaking, David, and I'll just answer this for everybody's sake, Noel can't tell you that, because a lot of the stuff we do is, the developers don't want their name known. So economic development, unfortunately, a lot of it is, is done-
On QT.
Yeah, it is. And, and it's not on the QT, it's not on the QT, but when we're working with developers in different places, when it comes on the agenda, if you look online on Novus Agenda, every single bit of information that we have is on there. And you can look it up, you can see. Yeah, right.
But that's only a week's notice.
Okay, thanks. Well, yes, no?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. The capital improvements program, which is a five-year program, also lists, they won't give you the specifics, but as an example, we have about $700,000 in bonds that were approved, I think, last year, last couple of years, for downtown acquisitions, so we can look at putting together and helping businesses expand downtown or move out of downtown, so we can acquire their sites for new and exciting things that come downtown. So the capital improvements program would give you a year-by-year for a five-year program, an idea of what we're looking at for acquisitions, for funds in different areas that would, might help you look at that.
Okay, thanks, Noel. And, you know, ladies and gentlemen, it's, I-
You can speak once.
Yeah. When we stop having businesses and industry wanting to come to Waterloo and asking us for help, and wanting to move and expand and get larger and build in Waterloo, when we stop having that, we're going to be in big trouble. I hope we have businesses who laid the rail from now on, wanting to grow and expand and move to Waterloo. I hope they ask for our help. I hope we are always able to give it to them in the future. That is what economic development is about. It's what success is about. It's why this city is thriving and growing, and it's exactly what Ed Gallagher is going to talk about. John?
John Sherbin, 1715 Robin Road. That is the most wonderful idea, but the problem is, who's paying for it? We're over $100 million in debt. No chance, nothing has ever been said, we're going to pay for it. Who's paying for it? Is it you, or is it me? Comes out of my pocket, it comes out of Forest's pocket, it comes out of all these people that care about this city. We can't function broke.
We're not broke, John.
We've been broke.
We're a long way from being broke.
We were broke when they put this highway down through here.
We're not broke, we're a long way from being broke.
Yeah.
Gals, darn it, guys, you know-
You're a hundred and some thousand and a billion dollars short of cash, right now.
Our bond rating is as high as it's ever been.
Pay it back. Pay a little back. Pay $100,000 back.
Okay.
Nothing ever gets paid back. We spend the money developing these businesses, don't pay us nothing. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to show a video tonight, ladies and gentlemen, that is exactly opposed to what you've heard for the last 20 minutes here. It's from an esteemed member of this community, that spent his life here, grew his business, grew his family here, invested in the city, invested in the Cedar Valley, and died in Waterloo, Iowa, making this a better community, making us the community that we are today. I'm proud to have known him. He was a friend. He's a very wise person, and he's got some nice things to say. Mark, if you're listening, and if you can start that, please do. Jerry?
Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, I have the great privilege of announcing our final award this evening for 2015. It's the annual Greater Cedar Valley Alliance and Chamber Legacy Award. This award is sponsored this year again by Birch Manufacturing, and of course honors the memory of the man whom we heard about earlier tonight, Harold Brock. And tonight, the Legacy Award is being presented to someone for whom I have the greatest respect, and for someone who has had certainly a lasting and positive impact on our Cedar Valley community and far beyond. I'm very happy to announce this year's Legacy Award winner. Watch the video. Ed Gallagher Jr. Born and raised in Waterloo, Edward J. Gallagher Jr. has been extremely active in civic and community organizations. A veteran of the United States Navy and considered one of the best lawyers in America, time and time again, Edward Gallagher Jr. has gone above and beyond for the Cedar Valley.
Yeah, the Legacy Award is there to honor someone who has a lifetime of service to the Cedar Valley, and no one does that better than Ed Gallagher. Again, he, he went off to war, came home, went to school, and immediately came back to Waterloo, built a practice, and immediately began helping to build Waterloo into a better place to live. And we see the evidence of that everywhere today, whether it's at the Gallagher Blue Dorn facility, or over at the Groff Museum facility, and the Five Sullivan Brothers, the other things that have gone on in the downtown of Waterloo, his church. He's the kind of guy that we can point to and, and say, he has spent his entire lifetime working for the, for the Cedar Valley, and we have the evidence that shows that we're a better place because of it, and we're better because we know it.
A member of Rotary, the ALX, Knights of Columbus, St. Edward's Catholic Church, and many more service organizations, Ed is one of the greatest supporters of the Cedar Valley.
I think it's easy and amazing thing. One of the things that I thought Ed also did was he was a leadership giver. So he was never the last guy to get in. He was always the guy that you could go to when you had a good idea, and you wanted to have some support and build some momentum. Because Ed would be the first one to step forward, and he would lead us forward. And I think if you look at the community, you know, the Gallagher Blue wasn't built with one or two donors, it was built with about 1,000 donors. And that's the kind of leadership that we had when you had Ed leading on.
Congratulations to the Legacy Award recipient for 2015, Mr. Edward Gallagher Jr.
Noel, it takes a lot to bring juice. Do you know that Irishmen like queso? I love you all, and I thank you for this honor. I thank the staff for all the work to tell the lies about me. And I had no idea when, some people called me to ask me about this, you know, so much fuss was being had on my behalf, and, and I do appreciate it. I told Betty, "Betty, do we make a speech on this?" She said, "No, you don't say anything, except if you want to say a few words, we'd listen to you." And so I asked her, "When do you want to finish this thing?" And she said, "Nine o'clock." Well, to keep a lawyer down to, well, really about 30 seconds, she, she really expects too much. And you know, as I sat here tonight, and listen, I've never even read the program before I got here, I thought of the marvelous hours of work and memos, because I'm familiar with that, I was never a part of it, but to see what must have been done to prepare for a banquet of the 600 people. But you know, what I see is a wave, a wave of confidence, positivism. We're going places. And, and I think the merger was a great thing, that brought about part of this, what I consider optimism and so forth. So I sat up with that, with that feeling in my heart, and I hope in yours, that we're not going to Waterloo and get beat up or Cedar Falls. We're here, we're going forward, folks. And I'm going to tell you, don't look backward, because we ain't going that way. Why did we want that extra money? Why are we proud as we turn around in Waterloo and Cedar Falls? Why are we proud as we turn around in Waterloo and Cedar Falls? I suggest it's because of my pride and your pride in the Cedar Valley and what it should be to all of us. I see industrial progress, some of those things that I didn't fully understand. Now, if you did, you raise your hand and you, how well that happened. But to me, it's a vision. We need that vision to do the job and the challenge we have. You know, as I, I have been on vacation, it was a heck of a bad vacation, because I fell on the tile floor where I was staying, and, don't do that. And I was in the shop. And I've been having all my friends and family saying, no fall, because I have a balance problem, a little balance problem, no fall, you're gonna break bones. So that awful fall, I felt, when I hit my bag, kind of spurly, you know, flat like that, so I didn't, maybe didn't bust it. So they rushed me down in an ambulance to the, you know, clinic, and they took x-ray after x-ray. And I hope the diagnosis isn't wrong, but I'm sure, a lot of badly, badly bruised back muscles and so forth. And so that's why I'm accepting propelled motivation tonight, movement. And I hope it goes away pretty soon. Anyway, that's why I'm in the shape I'm in. But you know, as I, as I came down Fifth Street, I thought of the fact, I've driven down this street for some 60 years, practicing law nearly every day of my life. And I thought then of this deal tonight, what should I tell these people? And my theme is, why love Waterloo and Cedar Falls? I love them. This is my hometown, and I'm not gonna leave here until, until they, they carry me. So I think we should all have that attitude, be positive about it. I remember when I was just graduating from Georgetown Law School, I didn't have any money, of course, nobody did that. And I called my dad, and my dad came to Waterloo in 1912, I think. And I said to him, Dad, what should I do? Here's his advice. And I give it to you young people today in the audience. He said, son, Waterloo was good to me, it's gonna be good to you. And you know, he was right. Waterloo has been good to me. Along came noise to Kathy, the practice of law, lifelong friends, satisfying activities and leadership roles in my church. God bless the Amets, American veterans of World War II. I worked with that and I was, became a national president. I had a lot of, and still have, satisfying activities and roles in my church. And Billy Bailey's here tonight, Billy and I have worked for, Billy probably 20 years, trying to keep the Grout Museum going strong and seeing two new additions to it that we had to raise the money for. And sometimes not knowing we were gonna get the rest, the paychecks for the latter part of the month. But we, we faced all those things, and today the Grout Museum is strong, and I think we can, we don't have to take a backseat to anybody at the Grout Museum, but we need your help. Because without that help, we can't go on. And of course, I worked, the third fundraising activity at the Grout, which was the Sullivan Brothers Iowa Veterans Museum. And you know, I defy anybody to say that isn't the best World War II Veterans Museum in the state of Iowa. You know? Kathy and I worked on those projects as well, and I had some wonderful people working together with me on the, on these activities that we had going. So I've gotta mention one more, one more person who was here tonight, Dave Hall Ball, Dave, a dear retiree. And he brought the committee together, and some of those guys I couldn't understand on their own either, but, but what they did is, is they gave us the technical advice so that the Grout has this unique feature, you pay a minimum amount, you push a button with a, with a key, which was what we call our battle, you know, we had to wear our neck of our war II. And that has been very successful, innovative, and we gotta be proud of what we do in Waterloo. And we have to sell it to the rest of the state, to the world. My secret weapon during those days was Kathy. And she basically worked on everything I did, she knew what I was doing. So we worked together on these activities, and, and you all know that, I don't think exactly. Cedar Valley Catholic School has recently dedicated a new middle school. And I had the joy of working with that from, from the very first minute it was followed. And believe me, the, the feeling that I had in my heart when those, I saw those kids when we opened the school, walking up the aisle, it filled me with the same kind of feeling I had tonight to your response to my nomination for this award. You know, the Sullivan Brothers have always been a part of, of our community life. I wrote my thesis after I got out of the Navy. I went back to Lawrence College and finished, and then went on to law school. But several years ago, anyway, I wanted to tell you, I wrote my thesis, and one of the pages concerned itself with Mrs. Sullivan. And I'm just thinking the emotion in her heart to hang five gold stars in her window. Those five boys went down in November of 1942 on the USS Junem altogether. And then the then mayor of Waterloo, shortly thereafter, asked me to be chairman, to rename the Conway Center, remember when it was the Conway Center, into the Sullivan Brothers'. And that was a joy because we brought back six of the seven then survivors still alive. But you know, and I had talks with them and, and introduced them at the service we had when we did the dedication. And that was a real joy and a memory to me. And so tonight, and it's getting late, I say farewell. With a sense of pride and accomplishment that I've heard tonight of the chambers of Waterloo and Cedar Falls and what they're trying to do, and they're not letting those narrow-minded people saying it couldn't be done or it won't be done, nothing will happen. And they proved it wrong. And I say, let's continue to prove those critics wrong and go forward with what we're trying to do here tonight. I see, as I told you, the results of those efforts. And remember what I told you. Don't look backward, look forward, because that's the way we're going, and that's the way we're gonna go. Thank you, Ed Gallagher.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all very much. Nine days later, Ed ducked after that speech. They did carry him out of here with all of that pride. We are moving forward every single day. We have a staff of dedicated people up here that look at everything we do. We are moving forward. We are not looking backward. We are going to do things as we have always done them, and we are going to continue to grow and prosper, and Waterloo has an incredibly bright future. Thank you.
Motion to receive and follow, motion to receive and follow oral comments adjourned.
Oh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.